All right, we're now entering the phase of meetings, a public hearing on the operating budget and the warrant for 2018. I want to give an overview of where the board made some generalizations and just to give you some, the big picture items first. We started off, we wanted to have essentially level services for most departments throughout the town. We asked for a 2% pay raise for our employees. We significantly, when I said level services, there are some exceptions. We increased our maintenance budget line, we more than doubled it. There's been a lot of talk about Stark Bridge. Stark Bridge cost overages, which still were some, were absorbed by the road agents budget from last year and this year. We had a surplus this year, which we split the surplus, we took some money, $165,000, we applied to the taxes to keep the taxes low. We also still put $47,000 into our reserves, emergency reserves. And so that's some big picture items. We have, under the warrant, we have very, several articles which will be discussed tonight. We have a, and for the record, the board of selectmen voted in favor of all of them unanimously. We have a police officer that's going to be going from warrant from part-time to full-time. We have the police chief to talk about that tonight. We have major upgrades and equipment maintenance issues at a transfer station. Mr. Woody will be addressing that tonight, and I'll be helping him. We have mill foil, which never ends, but the thing is, we had a good year last year, but we just can't let up, let down our guard. And so they're going to be asking for more dollars, and they've created a mechanism where we can continue, as we raise dollars, if they're not used in one year, they can be applied towards a trust fund. Potentially keeping taxes which have been raised from being just thrown into the general funding. There's a warrant to fund the final phase of brake fund repaving. This is phase three, and this should finish off brake fine for this year. The road agent will talk about that tonight. We have some capital reserve dollars for the highway vehicles. That's the standard routine, but the thing is, highway maintenance vehicles are expensive, and we're continuing to put money into the capital reserve fund for that. There's also a small article in there about pay raises for elected officials. Rather than being arbitrary and voting on pay raises for all the elected officials in the town, we elected, we go in to the voters, the legislative body, for you guys, the voters, to approve any pay raises for the elected officials. So that's just an overview of what we're going to be discussing tonight. We'll go through each warrant tonight. And, but it's an overview of where we are and where we've been. At the end of, I'll go through each warrant, and I'm just going to say, if all warrants are approved tonight, as we calculated tonight, it's going to be approximately a five cent decrease in the overall 2018 tax rate.
Five cent?
Five cent decrease.
That's correct.
And so that's where we stand tonight, if all warrants are approved. All right, so I'm going to start off with, if you have a copy of the town warrant right here, we'll start off. Article one, we'll go straight to article two. Essentially, the, just your town, the general municipal operations. A lot of the increases in throughout the general operations, a lot of them are attributable pay raises. However, I did point out, there are some increases in there, which are, for example, I'm going down elections. There's more elections this year, so we're going to have a few more dollars in elections. Legal, I'm going to go down legal. The thing is, we have, we're pending legal actions, there's two pending legal actions, so we plus up the budget appropriately for that. Specifically, we went on what they were. We have Kelsey Road, it's a pending legal action. And also the school construction company, we're pursuing legal actions so we can get the library support structure finished on. Some of the, there's a lot of increases in just in the maintenance line, department equipment maintenance at the transfer station. And the thing is, went from 85, $14,000. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, one of the major increases, they're just tires, skid steer tires. You know, you think of tires on a skid steer, you know, a couple hundred dollars each, wrong answer. $800 to $1,000 each. And that's, that's conservative, and we're going to get bids on it appropriately, bids, but that's almost $4,000 right there off the top. And so we wanted, we asked Woody to try to buy it at year end, but we didn't really have the dollars, and it was late, too late in the year to buy it, so he put it into his budget for this year, along with a couple other things. He also pointed out that in general, Haz's waste collection went up from $13,000 to $15,000 budgeted.
Are you going through this one or through the other one?
I'm going just in general.
This one here?
This one here. It's, I'm going in general here, just the outline. So the specific question is here, I will go through, and I'm going in general, my general line of just the general municipal budget.
Are you going to speak the specifics of the items?
I, I can, I can. The thing is, I can go down every number if you want, and the thing is, I will do so. But the thing is, I'm going to open up the questions as we go along. All right, I, I'll go, I want to go through the individual ones, so. Might as well, okay. I'm going to start off with the executive line of 121K, 121.9. Majority of that is the 2% pay raise. Any questions on that? Skip selectman salaries, elections, registrations, vital statistics, at 22174. Any questions there? As I said before, we have elections this year more than last year, so it's driving the prices up a little bit. Town clerk, elected salary, I'm going to skip that, that's just, that's their salary. No pay raise, and no pay raise reflected there.
Mike, can I make a reference?
Please, go ahead.
If you use the, this budget here, you could actually go to the dark lines, and the copy I just gave you represents the increase-decrease.
Okay.
And it might be more specific than what, yeah, right there. So the, for example, executive.
Executive went up $1,000.
$1,068, which primarily is a 2% increase on payrolls.
Right.
Next category, elections registration.
Went up $5,000.
$5,000, which represents four, four elections again.
Correct.
And then pay increases.
Down to financial administration.
Yep.
Went down $7,000 as an aggregate. Down to assessing department. Went up a miniscule amount, about $346. That was essentially computer support. Legal, I alluded to that already, legal, next item, legal expenses. The biggest line item there went up $3,000 in the board second legal fund from $12,000 to $15,000. And that's reflective of the two lawsuits we're entertaining.
How many reduced educations, no one there?
Basically, we left it at $1, and education, there were no.
No requests.
No requests, that's correct. But the thing is, it's left at $1 to hold the line.
Yep.
Any questions on the legal? Next one is personal administration. The biggest increase was in the retirement line. Why did that go up?
Employer contribution rates changed, the police went up to 29, almost 30%, and then the employees went up about 11.10.
Landing and zoning, no change. The new government buildings, this is on my maintenance line, I was alluded to earlier, were up $80,000. And the people say it was $80,000 a lot, it is. But the thing is, I got sticker shocked last year. Put on the note, machine here. I was just going to show people this far left-hand side. Go on all the way over. Here you go. One more time. Sit down. Is it light in the front?
Don't look at it.
Yeah, don't look. Okay, so we got light, it's just warming up.
Okay.
Okay. Dunbar, this is where, you know, everyone knows Dunbar, or it's center, the Dunbar Library. The thing is, it looks great from a distance, and you know, hey, that's Dunbar. Everyone knows that's the center of Dunbar, you know, that's, that's a focal point right there. But we got a problem with it, so. Just, here we go. Just look at the sign, if you walk up to the sign, look at the word hall, look at the word hall. That's rotting out, that's pure rot. Then you stop looking closer. Click again. That's all rot. Then you start looking at the paint, jeez, that paint still looks kind of nasty, doesn't it? And then click again.
It's the front entrance.
Yep, front entrance, slow, click again. We have bare wood being exposed on some of our column supports. Click again.
That was done a couple years ago by Dave Stilson.
Well, we're not doing it with him again. There's more paint missing. And we have bare wood here. Again, almost every window looks like that, completely coming off. All the, all the, these are the, on the baseboards, almost, of the building. Every one of them has got bare wood exposed. If you notice, not only the window, look at the window too. That's what almost every window looks like on the library. Looks great from a distance, but close up, the building is rotting as we speak. One more time. And that's, that's the siding, how it's painted. Not all of it, but a good percentage of it is just, and you see those, I call them corbels, with this little decorative.
Coin.
Coin, coin corners. Coin corners. Now, go back, the coin corners, they have, they're coming off the building, and there's actually water penetration behind the coin corners. One more time, again, more exposed wood. Does, see how they're just coming off? They're coming off, and they actually add water penetration. And this, this is the door, that's, the door is going to be replaced sooner than later. That's what Leo was asking about earlier. And then there's the top. We have just, even on the eaves, we have paint coming off there. Okay, thank you. That's it for now. The paint is lead paint. Thing is, we had two bids, which was sticker shocked for me. The first bid was $60,000, no paint included, that was just preparation, no paint. Second bid was $80,000, give or take, a rough estimate. We realized that our budget last year was $70,000. We didn't have enough to do anything in the library. And so the question is going to come to, I'm asking the voters, do we let the building rot? Or we do, do we at least do the right thing? Mitigate for lead, scrape, sand, and then paint it with a good primer and paint it. It's not cheap. I'm anticipating half the budget, maintenance budget, will go towards this building. It may take two years to do, but we want to encumber the money and get this building painted. If not, the thing is, there's all sorts of been talk about renovations in the town, about getting a committee, in this committee forum, to renovate this building, but we can't wait when you have bare wood. No matter what we do, it's still going to require paint and preservation, and that's why I'm asking a lot of money to appear for this. And this is just one building. The road agent has a building, I would not say it's the center of Dunbar, but for him it may be. However, his building needs painting too. So there's money allotted in the budget for his building to be painted.
A little bit cheaper.
A little bit cheaper, but the thing is, it's, but it still needs to be painted. I mean, we have bare wood being exposed. And I think, and I'm going to go one step further, the transfer station. If you stop, you know, the transfer station is not the garbage, right? The building's going to be maintained in order to receive the garbage, and it's having the same problem. So that's on the list of also being entertained. It's not going to be nearly as expensive as a library, because neither of them, of those two latter buildings are with lead. But the, the challenge will be the library, and that's why I asked for a larger budget here. And the thing is, I asked for more, the selectman, my fellow selectman reeled me in, and they gave me a more reasonable number to work with, and that's why it went up.
Do you have an estimate on what it's going to cost besides those two prior bids?
Just those two bids. We are going to put out the bid appropriately. We, we didn't, it wasn't a formal bidding process, they came in, we never, never dreamed it would be that high. And based upon those two bids, we realized we were way over our head as far as having the right amount of dollars on hand, and we realized, we talked to the painters, we explained to them, we appreciate their bid, but we're going to go through a more formal process, because it's going to require a, you know, the legal bidding process, business of twenty.
It's going to be more in paint, though.
Say again?
It's more than just paint, actually.
No.
In, in most cases, right now, the things we're looking at in town go beyond just painting. They go where you've got dry rot or other problems that have to be corrected, you know, and, and is this a whole magnitude of things that are building up with, whether it's things, little things at the police station?
Well, I'm saying, that building over there, you're not going to paint those baseboards, they're all rotted.
No.
Right, right.
There's nothing to paint in that building.
They'll restore the, the, there's a lot of the stuff they'll have to restore. There's the moldings on some of those columns in the back that they'll either have to replicate or do something, because it's gone beyond dry rot, it's gone, you know, to the point that you can pull it apart with your finger there.
Even the door, which Lee alluded to today, one thing we did, we realized, we just said, why is a door rotting out? That's a nice door, why is it rotting out? We just sat back and looked at the rain flow off the roof. The thing is, you know, we put up some, $800 for the gutters, and now the, the door is protected from rainfall from the, from the portico right there. Just a simple fix like that, we said, we're going to put the rain gutters up before we even put up the new door. And, but that's just one little fix, I mean, this stuff's got to be addressed, or we won't have a building left.
The masking tape's not as rugged as you thought it was.
So you're going to do two contracts, one for preservation and then paint, or are you going to do it as a paint and preservation?
Paint and preservation.
There's not every painter's a preservation person, so.
No, the thing is, we're not talking about, it's where they see, like, when they painted this, this building here, if they were rotted boards, he had, the painter brought his carpenter, brought a carpenter in, and replaced the rotted boards in this building this year. We did paint this building for about $13,000, and there were some boards that needed to be replaced. And so that's what we're hoping on.
You know, what happened last year, we thought we would have more done, but we also did improve lighting, one of them being at the Public Works Building. And that was to save money, you know, investing, hopefully to save money in the long term.
Could you?
Did you look at the potential of replacing the siding with a cement clavering rather than trying to?
We have not, not yet.
Take care of the lead, and, I mean, because then you can dispose of the paint along with the boards.
We could, we could definitely consider that.
Paint never lasts.
What's that?
Paint never lasts on these, all the buildings down there.
But it is a circle building, the thing is, I think, before we jump on any contract, we may want to talk to the committee of the rest of, I mean, and see what their plans are too, because they, they want to spend dollars on, I'm talking about major dollars to renovate the entire building, but the thing is, if we don't do anything, it just rots. And I think that's the sad part, and we don't need it to rot. As I said, from a distance, jeez, it looks great, doesn't it?
You have any linear feet of siding was over there?
Absolutely not. Thing is, I've learned more about painting this year than you can shake a stick at. I started the year off with no experience, and now I know too much about painting. And even this building, why would, this building was painted relatively recently. And then I come to find out, when the painter came by, they never primed it, they just slapped paint on it. And so I wondered a lot about painting and learned that I like siding. Okay, now, from the maintenance budget, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, we're going to spend this much money on the building to, to repair all of this. We're going to have anybody overseeing this work, or is this just going to be, at the end of the day, we can go look and see what they did? I mean, you know, it'd be nice if somebody was actually stopping and see what's going on. Versus, once the paint's over, you don't see what's happened, you know?
Contract administration.
Yeah. We don't have that in place yet. The thing is, we, we have to develop bids for that, and we have to figure out who's, who and what expertise we want to bring into monitoring the progress.
And our building inspector?
That's a possibility, but I don't want to speak for him, because I don't know if his expertise will lean.
No, no, and I understand that, yeah. Maybe he's not, I don't want to say qualified, but maybe he's not.
True.
You know? So, but my point is, at least somebody could be overseeing that, because there was work done here in town lots of times, and nobody ever goes back to look at it, and once it's done, it's done.
Amen, amen to that. I mean, the idea of painting the building without putting any primer on bare wood.
Yeah, I think before we paid off, painted on this building, I went around and pointed out quite a few places that you had to come back and take care of.
Yeah, my point is, if somebody can go on and inspect and the progress going on.
Something will probably incorporate to the contract.
You know, because they're going to be working around an area that you can see what's, you know, you can follow what's going on. So if somebody can actually take the time to go see what's going on, you know?
Point, well-taken point. The thing is, that's something we'll probably have to put into the contract, where it'll be inspectable on the way. And payments will be dispersed at appropriate times, not all at once.
After inspections.
After inspections, yeah. But those are things we want to put in, I think someone said the word contract administration?
Yes.
That's what we need here. Okay, but that's, that's why we did plus up the budget appropriately for that line. So moving on, if there's no other questions on that, I just wanted to give it, give you an impact of why we're asking for some dollars. Okay, I went to cemetery. Cemetery had, did not ask for any additional money from their line. Zero increase. Insurance, going down insurance, off the county bid. Police department. Overall, went up a small amount. I believe one of the things was, they had an equipment. Can you speak to that?
Yes, please.
So we, we, we've been replacing our mobile radios in vehicles, and they, the last few have been done with warrant articles on the vehicles we replaced. We're not asking for a vehicle this year, we don't anticipate asking for one next year. So, to continue the radio upgrade program, we included that in, in our, in our budget. And there's been small increases across the board, across the entire board, whether it be from police dispatch to telephone bill, to computing, networking issues. Vehicle maintenance kept the same. But you can see the big police, the radio repair went up, that's a $4,000 increase. Any questions there? Going on to the fire department. Again, I want to repeat a voter's, do you have enough, chief?
Yes.
Okay. To quote a voter at a town meeting, do you have enough, chief? The thing is, he went up a small amount, $5,000. And he did some great things with his training this year, consolidated a lot of his training to save some dollars. But the thing is, when it comes to, I think the biggest thing, when it comes to, it's a mutual aid, it's a crapshoot, you said?
Well, no, the, the paramedic intercepts it.
Right.
We don't, we can't.
You can't predict, it's not predictable.
But, you know, our biggest budget item is, or dispatch, it's, it's, it's a third of the budget, but nothing we can own.
Right. Yeah, someone's going to answer that phone call. Going on to building inspection, building department?
Um, we'll back up a second.
Sure.
Is it dispatching? There's a dispatching in the letters, we have John.
It's actually mutual aid, which is dispatch.
See, it's 26, 27, I, I alluded to mutual aid.
Did you ever think of checking on Goston like you did with the police department, to see if we can buy it cheaper?
If you can buy it cheaper, you don't get the service that we get. We belong to a, we belong to the Capitol area mutual aid, we also belong to the, to the, Haz's.
Is there a response team?
Yeah, but there's a name for it, but anyways, we get all our Haz's response covered through that, and there's no way we can ever do that. Goston doesn't offer that. So any kind of hazardous incident, they, they respond and take care of it for you, so. That's a, a big chunk of it, plus, you know, automatic mutual aid, everything they do, we just, we can't really compare apples to apples with anybody in the area. I mean, I'll guarantee you they're going to be cheaper in Goston, but you don't get the service that we get where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you, chief. Answer the question, and I'll, okay. Building inspection, it went up a tiny bit, I'm not terribly worried about that, because at this point I have a vacancy, and we're waiting for the fill of vacancies. And so I think, again.
How was that, how did you fill the vacancy?
We did too. Unfortunately, the, the person resigned, and she was offered her old job back, and she, I'll leave it this way, she may have thought the grass was greener, but necessarily it wasn't, so she went back to her old job. And I have no idea what they offered to her, but the thing is, I wished her well, she wished us well, she had no ill feelings, and nothing, nothing had done, or enforced her to get out of here, but we're advertising, and every week that goes by, we save a few dollars. And by the way, if you're interested, you can see it on Hot Topics, and there's an ad out there. Okay. Emergency management, there's basically no change to that. I see, for the budget line.
Going to go on to the department.
Yep. Highway department. Now, the thing is, I'm going to speak for Jeff, he is asking essentially the same amount of money as he did last year. However, some of his services may be impacted because of the Stark Bridge, he's, he's working with that. However, he does have a warrant in the, he does have a warrant article in the warrant, asking for money to finish off the paving, phase three, final paving of brake fine road.
Well, earlier you said the overages from Stark Bridge was covered from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Yes, correct.
It's a grand total on the overages that are covering both budgets.
Grand total. Essentially, we had $52,000 taken out of his budget last year, and that was to pay for the, pay for the actual bridge. And then we have $85,000. I'm, $87,000, I stand corrected, $87,275 from the highway budget this year to fully cover the cost of the installation of the bridge.
That's also, that's not including the other $4,000 or so you get from the.
We got $85,000 grant revenue.
The blockade grant extra.
Correct. The thing is, the thing is, it was, I would say, an interesting journey to get where we are. The bridge will be completed this year, and the good news is, the bridge has been, the progress, insulation has already been started. I think the weather will probably delay it for the next few, several weeks until the weather clears again, but the thing is, coffer dams have been installed, and you can see, actually see pictures of the installation on the police department's website. And they can show, I think, two weeks of work, two weeks of work, being where they showed as it progresses with the coffer dams. The old bridge was removed, and so the, the next phase, next phase is essentially to put the supporting structures in. And then the bridge after that. Do I, am I, am I getting it correctly, sir?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. Okay, you taught me well. I would say it's been an interesting journey, but I think it's, it will be done this year. Yes, sir?
Um, $52,000, $87,000's approximately, almost $40,000. Um, fifty-two thousand, eighty-seven thousand's approximately, almost under forty thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Quick addition. Now, it's under forty thousand dollars that's come out of our maintenance budget for maintaining the roads. What hasn't been done that should have been done, that's getting kicked down the road, that's gonna cost us more money, and still gonna be, and probably in worse shape because it's not getting done.
What the road agent does, what he does, he meets with the public, and he has a prioritization workshop where he prioritizes projects. And those projects which will seem to be critical elements will probably be moved to the top. And there'll probably be some deferrals on some of the less critical projects. And I leave it to him, I don't micromanage him as far as his priorities, but he takes public input into that session. Jeffrey, you wanna elaborate a little bit further?
Yeah, I mean, we got involved with this project. When it got out of our hands, got out of our control, and sold the cost, but that's beside the point. I can complain about that till the cows come home, it's not gonna change anything. The fifty-two thousand, we always knew that we would have to contribute some money out of the highway construction maintenance fund to install the structure. Well, it came evident this fall that it was above the highway department's capability of putting it in. We're gonna reach out higher, a contractor to put it in because it's a more complicated project. I'm not gonna go into all the passes of it, I don't think that's that important. So he took the fifty-two thousand, and encumbered it to go to help offset the cost, spread the cost out. And the eighty-five thousand we got from the state was, you can call it a gift. Mr. Sununu was governor, and he signed the bill, forwarding all the towns a substantial amount of money, which we never even knew we were gonna get until the check showed up one day.
Which was a blessing.
Which was, actually was, that was, it'd be put toward paving, construction, bridges. So it's actually been kind of a lifesaver really on the project, if you wanna know the true hype. And then we were still gonna have a balance, so instead of going back before the taxpayers and asking for more money, collectively between myself and the selectmen, we decided that we would just work within our means, work within our budget to get it done.
But to answer your question, there's no one specific item which has been deferred. There's not, there'll be a part, there'll be a prioritization as always.
Yeah, I mean, things get delayed every year for one reason or another. The winter's over, I mean, the roads are just in horrible shape, the frost is, I mean, hey, that's gonna take its toll on things in shapes. There's never enough money, there's no doubt about it. We'll just keep plugging away.
Is it okay with the answer?
I don't think it's gonna get any better, so.
Well, the thing is, the good news is, I think is, I can confidently say that the bridge will be in this calendar year. The thing is, if it's not, I'm gonna be running out of town with a pistol.
From a catastrophic event.
Right.
Structures made, sitting on the ground.
And highway winter, that was a subcategory?
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's weather dependent, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we've been able to stay within that.
What percentage of your budget are you, is already expended this year?
I don't know, I didn't know.
Okay, I know it's up there.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've had a pretty good slug of winter, have an odd one, to say the least. But you never know, it changes, it could get shut off tomorrow or next week, and you never know. But we've used these numbers for several years, and they've seemed mysteriously somehow to work out. Occasionally, we have a surplus in that part of the budget, and when we have a surplus there, it enables us to do other work.
Yep. Okay, continuing on, I'm gonna go on to solid waste disposal, waste department. Essentially, it's up around twenty-one thousand five hundred. And some of the key items, we proactively raise prices on hazardous material, potential with, based upon input from the organization, any professional organization you can work with. They anticipate more higher prices there. There's also some dollars item in there for maintenance of equipment, as I alluded to earlier. Just the skid tier tires, that's a four thousand dollar hit, easily. And there's things always breaking down there. I had my urgency of this discount just a month ago, one of the baleers broke. And I think it's one of, when a baleer breaks down there, I, I, I worry about recycling. You just can't, it basically holds production almost immediately. And it's one of those things where you just don't hesitate to get it fixed. Woody got some estimates for it, and the estimate came right on, almost smack on perfect. And I saw the repair job this afternoon, I would say, Woody looks great, I think you agree with me.
Yeah, he did a really good job.
Yeah, and it should last for hopefully many more years. All right, any, any other questions on solid waste disposal? I'm gonna say one thing, I think is, I think as we go down in the future, that's an, that's an item that the select board is gonna be looking at very carefully. We're gonna be looking at salaries, we're gonna be looking for cost savings as far as potential for doing other things, out of thinking out of the box. It's an essential service for Dunbar, but the thing is, it just, we gotta stop, do something to rein in the prices a little bit. So it's gonna be a challenge for this coming year. And select board has already come up some ideas, Woody's come up some separate ideas, and we're gonna put our minds together and come up with some, hopefully some savings for down the road. But near-term savings, I don't see any. Welfare, I suppose it went up a hundred and thirteen dollars. I cannot speak to welfare, I'm still waiting on a report from welfare. We're keeping it essentially very close to the same. The select board has asked the welfare director for accounting of, not names, but number of people we've helped in town. And until we get that, we may, we're gonna deal with that department as we move forward. There were some illnesses along their holidays, but the thing is, we are still waiting on a report of the numbers of citizens we helped. So we can get a little more accurate feel for that line item. Parks and Recreation, we recommend, there were no recommended increases. Feel kinda bad that last year, the thing is, at the town meeting, they asked for more money, and they didn't expend it all. And so we're gonna be watching that again this year, but we're not, there were no recommended increases to Parks and Recreation. There was some shuffling of the money, some of the money around within departments. Old Home Day, you see, went up from forty-five to five thousand. And there was just an internal shuffling between the lines that's to make things a little bit easier for Old Home Day. Oh, yeah. Library, which has been, in my opinion, it's been, it's been a great year for library. I think the library's evolved into a true community activity, where there's a lot of, a lot of things going on around and at the library. And she presented the budget asking for less money, and we definitely recommend this.
Where is it?
Very bottom, last page.
Back page.
Went from ninety-four to eighty-seven, dropped seven thousand dollars, and we were, we were just.
I bet this one got good.
That's it. That's it. We're gonna get to the top.
It's just one line.
Oh, okay.
So we're very happy about that. And you gotta realize.
I told you it was a long day.
Well, the library has board trustees, board directors, you might say, they, they, they basically govern the way the library operates. And so they asked for money, and we were happy to see that they were responsible in their request. Well, any comments you can help me out with? So that's warrant article two. And what the board selecting decided to do is it was, in twenty-eighteen, it was definitely higher, but that's where we're gonna, we, uh, went from three seventy-four to three eighty-six. And it was being offset by surpluses, so there'd be no net increase of dollars left from taxes. Any questions on article two?
The excess revenue budget twenty-seventeen on the back page, hundred and twenty-four thousand one sixty-seven, is that included, the block grant for the highway?
No. No, that's not part of our revenue, that has to be encumbered and kept separate.
It's just strictly just the revenues.
That's correct.
It's the fund balance after you take the one sixty-five towards the operating budget, and you put the forty-seven into our fund.
The surplus?
Yes.
Close to three hundred thousand. I'll get the exact number, give me one second, I'll give you.
That's almost a five percent, yeah?
Well, we're at, we're at five percent. We're at the recommended. But the thing is, we've gotta be careful, the DRA recommends, they have a recommended amount. And what I've learned, certain, certain person has taught me, that when we have warrants, which is kinda like money already, money designated for something, they include that in their budget surplus. So we're not quite perfect at the five percent. Five percent by the, by the state, we're in the, we're in the green range, the safety range, we'd like to be a little bit healthier. And so we're continuing to put some money into our emergency fund.
Well, that's a nice question, is what's the auditor say? Because the DRA and the auditors are gonna have two different figures.
Yes, and the thing is, they, basically, they made a great delineation of where we are, and where how much money is actually committed versus actually not committed at all. You might have the document here if you'd like to know exactly. I anticipated that question. Okay. It's the one you printed up last week.
The R A says we had four sixty, which is what we set our tax rate at. And then his has.
Okay. The R A said we had four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Of that, the auditor says our true balance is only two hundred and sixty-eight K. So our true reserve is two hundred and sixty-eight K. And we're adding, as I said earlier, we're adding forty-seven K to that, and that will bring it up a little bit over three hundred thousand. So we're continuing to add a reserves. And you say, people ask, why do we need reserve? Thing is, the town, the thing is, we had a reserve two years ago of only twenty-six thousand dollars. If this building burnt down, like Jeff's building burnt down, and with a vehicle in it, we'd be, we'd be collecting some insurance, but we'd be hurting. And we'd have to, we'd be hurting big time.
By the time you collect insurance, it'd be too late.
Right. And so we'd be taking, we'd be probably calling special meetings to tax the heck out of the homeowners. Am I correct? And so it's important to have reserve. The thing is, I think by the state looking at us independently, they say we're in a safe area. Our auditors say a little different. And the thing is, we look at our auditors, and we're still growing our reserve to where it should be, truly unassigned balance. And we're not quite there yet, but we're on our way.
A lot better off.
I'm sorry?
We're a lot better off.
Oh, a lot better off. The thing is, at the same time, it's nice to build a surplus, but you just can't leave buildings to rot.
No, right, no, you're getting things done at the same time.
Well, I think we are. Okay, article, next article we'll go to. Article three.
You, excuse me.
Go ahead, sir.
You mentioned burning down the highway bridge.
You're cynical.
What you guys, what you're talking about.
Don't worry, you're cynical.
Is the file-out system in your budget, is it?
I don't know.
We did not include it per se in the number, but we did get a quote last year that we put off because it's a little higher than we expected.
We had a quote for two years on that.
It was a five grand amount.
Oh, we've had a quote for two years on that. Blackstone House on the board, we had a quote.
Correct.
I think there was a discussion whether it was actually required to have a fire alarm there, because people don't actually there overnight. And I think there was a discussion on that, as you recall. Whether it was actually required. Say again?
There's different categories, cause it's not life safety, but it's a town building with a lot of expensive equipment in it, which.
For five thousand dollars, that's pretty expensive.
I would look into your budget this year.
Well, we have a, we have a maintenance line, and some of the thing is, some of it's non-committed at this point, we can definitely look back. We'd like to have the road agent be an advocate for that, would you agree?
I think yeah.
I was. We will, we will work together to make sure he continues his advocacy. Okay.
We got lights for us.
The lights are good, the thing is, a lot of people don't realize, we spent a significant number of dollars to remove some of the old lighting in there. We replaced it with LEDs, and it has a payoff about six years, after six years of payoff, it actually is big time savings.
Unless there's a fire.
Or whatever source it is.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry?
Unless there's a fire.
Unless there's a fire. Okay, article three.
One quick question?
Please.
Sorry, sorry. On something like that, you wouldn't necessarily maybe need a whole fire alarm system, because you don't have to evacuate a building when there's nobody there. But what if you went to a simply safe security system and bought a whole bunch of their smoke detectors, and you get an automatic notification that the smoke detectors go off? Whoever's got the app on their phone could get notified, and it's called four hundred bucks.
I don't know how he's gonna handle with his diesel truck smoke. John knows the whole story, heat related thing, isn't he?
Oh, yeah, heat detectors, there are some smokes. We are, yeah, we have a proposal for a system which really isn't that.
No, we will, we will seriously look at that, we will seriously look at that, yeah. And look at all the options.
Yeah, let's think about the uses.
Go ahead, sir.
If the school project passes, where part of that project is replacing the entire fire alarm system over there, we'll have a guy in town, a contractor, might be able to get a good price to have him go down the street and do the town garage as well.
We'll keep that in mind, that's a good, good suggestion. Great. Now, going on to article three, thank you. All right, to see if the town will raise a sum of fourteen K to be added to the reevaluation capital reserve fund, previously established for this purpose as summarized in the capital improvement plan. All right, reevaluation capital reserve fund, to determine what we're gonna tax your houses at. Am I correct?
Something mandated by the DRA, so.
Exactly. So the thing is, we've been collecting money on this for several years, and the selectmen voted three, zero in favor. I don't see any discussion on this, because it's been routine, we've been collecting it for years. So it's not a major amount. Article four. See if the town will raise, vote and raise to appropriate the sum of forty K to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund, previously established for this purpose and summarized in the capital improvement plan. Again, fire trucks are expensive, and you can't buy them outright in a single year. You have to plan for it and, and budget for it. And I believe this is what we're doing, correct chief?
Yep, we're playing catch-up, but we still have some money in the bank when it goes to.
I thought the fund was supposed to be sixty thousand a year.
Well, we cut, we cut it back, originally, we did this, the AP was, wasn't that much, but budget, we kept cutting it back.
A couple of years ago.
Okay. Article five. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of thirty-four point six K to purchase our monitoring related equipment to equip, to authorize the withdrawal of said funds from the fire department equipment, non-lapsing special use revenue fund created for this purpose, and no amount come from taxation. Voters love this. And just, just for the public, the special use revenue fund is basically created from where?
Insurance money collected for ambulance transport, money goes into that account. Is it to buy equipment, or basically, it's said to buy brand, an ambulance or related equipment, so. Last ambulance we bought, majority of the money was already in, in the bank. Our ambulance should last, oh, it's two thousand ten, so, you know, hopefully.
Said maybe, maybe more years.
Yeah, maybe more years.
Okay, article six. See if the town will, will vote to raise appropriate sum of one hundred K for the purpose of adding top code of pavement section of Grapevine Road, phase three, this is the final top code. And this is, this has been, this is, as I said, phase three, the third time it's been asked, and this should finish off Grapevine Road. I think it's straightforward, any questions? Now, here's the fun one next, another one, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of twenty-five K to be added to the highway vehicle capital reserve fund, previously established for this purpose as summarized for the capital improvement plan. And I got educated today, these vehicles cost upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sometimes. Am I correct? But the thing is, we have to have the money in there, it's again, it's. But the thing is, we have to have the money in there. It's again, it's put money away for replacement vehicles down the road. We're getting close. Understood. Okay, article eight. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of 24.54K to hire and equip a full-time police officer position. Set them up, deflecting funds for this position starting August 5, 2018. This sum is to be raised from taxes. This is essentially taking a part-time officer, which we have right now, now standing officer, and converting him to a full-time position. This is not an expansion of the police force per se as far as staffing or impact upon that. I think, in my opinion, the selectmen voted 3-0 in favor of this. This is a, I'm going to let the police department speak for this, but my opinion here is that this is good succession planning. We have an aging force of part-timers. And we have part-timers who will have left this year. And it's getting more and more difficult to hire police officers, whether it be part-time or full-time. And an opportunity has presented itself. And I think I commend the administration of the police department for seizing this opportunity and planning for the future rather than being a knee-jerk reaction three, four years from now. I'll leave it to you, chief. If you'd like to address it. Over the past several years, we've finally had difficulty filling a lot of our part-time shifts. And we've had people that have been as part of the police department, as part-timers, that have a lot of longevity. And as they began to age, they cut back on the number of shifts that they wanted to work. The availability dropped. And I came to the board about hiring some additional part-timers. And we did that. We hired two. It was a very difficult process because, again, the pool is kind of slim of the eligible candidates. It was very time consuming. We did get a couple of people. One of them was already part-time academy trained, so he came on pretty quickly and he had a pretty low cost. He's a young guy, very sharp. He's going to be moving on. He's already taken a part-time job. And his hours are limited to be able to go to military. The other guy that we hired, he's a very desirable candidate. And he's being, he's kind of being moved by other agencies trying to take him on as a full-time candidate. One of our long-time full-timers left January 2nd, so our complement is down by one. So what we've, what we're in, what we'd like to do, what we're proposing is to hire an additional full-time position. And in order to do that, what we would do is hire him, start him in August. And this would reduce the impact of the increase over the course of two years. Hire him in August, he attended the August academy. Once he graduated, we'd be able to put him on the road right away. He's already been field trained. He's been out there working. He was out there working today. So it would be very simple to put him on. What we're proposing, next year, we would have to bear the full cost of this officer for the year. So what we're proposing to do is to cut our part-time budget by about $20,000 next year to absorb some of that cost. The new employee would work many of the shifts that the part-timers are currently working. So that should, it is an expansion, but it's a solution to a problem that we have filling shifts into the future. It's a more permanent solution. So our tax impact, again, spread out over the course of two years, the total impact for the two-year project would be of 16 cents per thousand. And that's, that would be an increase over the 2017 budget, 2018, 2019 total project cost.
Doesn't get any credit for being a part-time?
He has to go to the academy.
Really?
Yeah.
The entire thing.
Yep, got the whole academy. I know.
I think he gets some credit. He's already five times through.
Credit. The only credit he has, he has uniforms already.
Uniform, field trained, equipped.
Yeah.
So that goes from August to the summer?
Sixteen weeks.
I view this as a true investment for the future for Dunbar. How many candidates you, how many candidates you had when you had a pool of candidates to choose from? Approximately, how many did you have to weed through before you found qualified ones?
I think, the officer we're referring to, I think back in 2015, we ended up running two processes. And I think we had probably a ballpark, over 15 to 20 candidates that applied, and we ended up with one. The hiring process in and of itself weeds out a lot of candidates. So there's been a lot of other agencies in the state offering hiring bonuses upwards of $10,000 because they can't find any full-time police officers or people who want to enter the field. So when we have a good employee, we want to try and retain them.
Another question. When we, if the people are soliciting full-time police officers, what commitment do we have from this individual if we're going to invest money and time in this person that they will stay here any length of time? You follow what I'm getting at?
Yeah, you're talking about a contract.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if we do contracts or what.
Yeah, we've done those in the past. We've gotten three-year contracts. We've committed to staying three years.
We've talked about three things here. $10,000 sign-on bonuses, a young guy who's probably going to want to climb a ladder somewhere.
No, no, we're talking about different people who we don't offer a bonus. No, the guy that we're interested in...
No, no, but other places are going to come and solicit our police officers.
They've been soliciting for the last year.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
He's been soliciting. He's had full-time offers in other agencies. He wants to work in Dunbar.
I think what Jeff's getting at is...
So we don't get a commitment?
No, right. What Jeff's getting at is that, so what's happened is, we get him, we train him, and then someone else offers him that $10,000 sign-on bonus, and he skips off.
Yeah, commit like the police academy, you're paying for the 16 weeks of police academy. What assurance do we have that January 1st, when he returns, he's still with us?
What we've done in the past is we've got a three-year contract.
Okay.
That's what I signed when I was hired, was a three-year training agreement.
Will you pursue the same thing?
Yeah, yes.
What are you still doing there?
That's all I was trying to get. It's only like three-year contracts.
Don't give me any ideas.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions for the chief? Thing is, I think it's going to be a challenging uphill battle in the, because you're asking from the full-time officer. A lot of people look at this as a, why do we have more police officers? It's really the same amount of staffing you're going to maintain. It's just the way, instead of staffing with all part-timers, you're going to staff it with a full-timer.
That's exactly right.
The thing is, the only thing is, full-time does incur other costs to the town, and that's what we have to justify. The thing is, I think succession plan is so important. As I said earlier, we have an aging force. I foresee two to three officers within four years gone from the Dunbar Police Department. And tell me if I'm wrong.
No, no, I, we, our part-time is our, we have two of them that work quite a bit, and they're both in the early sixties.
If I could quote a Dunbar employee, it's better to be pulled over by a full-time Dunbar police officer than it is a part-time police officer. He's going to get a ticket with a part-time.
And the other important thing too, you'll see up there, our candidate is already on his wife's healthcare plan. So he would take the stipend in lieu of the town's health insurance, which right there is a significant overall reduction in what it would cost.
And for people to understand what the stipend is, we offer a healthcare benefit. It's very generous. However, if your family member is on a healthcare plan, it's kind of like overlaps. So rather than sending them for ours, making the town spend money, which you're getting overlapping plan, we say, hey, here's $500. If you just stay on your wife's plan, you can take $500 and apply it towards your wife's plan, and we don't have to put you on our plan. Saves, gives more money to the individual family, and it gives more, saves money to the town. And we have several people across the town doing that, where they're both husband and wife work, and it saves dollars, saves dollars to the town. A lot of dollars, I'm sorry.
I'll ask you this question now because you're going to get asked. Do I allow you to have 24-hour coverage?
No. No, what if we have 24-hour coverage? That would be a substantial increase in personnel, and I'm not advocating that at any time in the near future. Okay.
Is it possible in January?
Eric Blowla. Yeah, it is. We're going to continue on. Okay. Article nine. Thing is, I'm going to start, this is about the transfer station. If we just put on another slide, if you could... Oh, just push the big light one. No, no, the big one.
This is a big truck.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Little technical difficulties here.
That's fine. Pushed it.
It's on, okay. We're going to go here. We're going to go security. We're going to go here. We're going to go here. This is every favorite, this is the favorite department in the town.
I don't see anybody working.
That's your day.
All right. This covers the next two more articles. I just want to give an overview. Woody, you can help me and chime in if you want to go along. Okay, next slide.
What's number one of that?
All right. This is a Mack truck. This is a beautiful truck. It's nice.
Want to do article nine first and then...
I'm going to give an overview and come back.
Okay, gotcha.
There's an overview and I'll come back. This is a wonderful truck. It's actually shiny. It looks like it's newly painted. But the thing is, you say, boy, that looks great. Next slide. Then you start seeing, oh my God, there's some paint missing there. And the thing is, oh, that can be taken care of with just a little spray paint. Keep going. A little spray paint, no problem. And the thing is, people said, Woody, you're going to use the wrong term. You wanted to get a paint job for the truck. And the thing is, people will laugh at it and give them a hard time. You don't need no stinking paint job. You can get spray paint. A little Rust-Oilium will fix that. Next quote. However, if you start looking deeper, and one more, and underneath the vehicle, what's hidden is the cancer of New Hampshire. The salt that's screwing up our truck. Next slide. And then you have another one. And then you have cracks here. What are you going to, if you can tell me where some of these parts are, you can chime in.
It's on my driver's side rear, at the back tandem.
Okay, one more. More rust.
Most everything you're going to see is towards, from the tandem's back on the frame.
One more. And more rust. Just rust in the road.
That's a little worse on a plow truck.
Yeah.
That's nothing.
But still, it's an investment. And the thing is, these trucks go for, what did you say?
That truck right now roughly runs between 200 and 250,000 dollars.
Okay. And again, one more. And again, just rust everywhere. I saw one underneath. And again.
At the town hall.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so this is what we're asking to be done. We're asking, we're going to ask contractors to do two things. We want to move, remove all the paint coming off the truck due to poor adhesion. We're going to sandblast the frame, body and wheels. We're going to weld any, the rear bumper assembly, any cracks I see, they're going to be welded and repaired. You're going to prime it with epoxy primer. We're going to paint the specifications, green cab with a clear coat, black body and frame. That's essentially what we're going to be asking. We've got one quote as a starting point, and that's what we're using as the budget item. Next slide. Now, the thing is, there's also another thing. It's called a cover. The thing is, this cover assembly is crap right now. Next slide. Basically, it's barely operational. Woody, how would you describe the operation in the wintertime? What do you have to do to make it work?
Well, before I can cover a load, I have to get out the torch. And that's a tube within a tube that over the years, the rust has built up in there, moisture gets in there, and it freezes. You can't get the cover to go out. So you have to take the torch. The last time it happened, I spent 45 minutes unheating the metal up so I could get it to come in and out.
And during the summer, does it even work?
During the summer, it'll go, but it's slow. I can even put primer, penetrating oil and things in there. It's still, the rust is built up in there.
Okay, no, one more, one more.
The tolerances are tight on it.
There's a little grease in this?
No, not on that. It's just a square tube within a square tube.
Thing is, we have to cover the product. You have to cover the product.
The other thing that's happened now in the cold is that when you go to run the cover system, there's a set of valves that run there. I don't, I'm not a hydraulic guy, so I couldn't tell you what's going on. But when you pull one lever, and the function doesn't happen, but you pull the lever that's not supposed to do that function, and the function's happening, I don't know.
Have to move some hoses.
The timing.
The other things, and then up top there, there's a, where that cover is, there's a big spring in there. And it's not retracting like it should. Springs wore out. The cover system has been on the truck from...
You say it's just plain crap right now?
It, it's time to replace it.
Thank you. All right. And the thing is, it's going to be replaced because of, what does it do? What is the function? Does it serve? It protects your...
Well, yeah, it protects the people who follow you. It's covered, hydraulic, which I have to be covered. Basic that cover, you asked, we put it on in 2003 because we had one cover system that we originally bought with it. The committee at the time we thought would work, and it didn't work. We ended up selling that one. And we bought this automatic cover system. Like I said, it's balanced, it's 2003. The new one that we're looking at doesn't have the slide tubes in it. It's one arm, aluminum arm, one arm. It's actually electric over hydraulic versus the air-driven PTO.
And state law requires, is there a...
You're going to have a little cover.
Okay, so that's the cover. Go to the little slide now. The little, make it, make the, no, no, no. Go over to, make the slideshow.
F5, F5, I think.
F5?
So how long is it going to take to get this truck fully rebuilt?
Basically, looking at about three weeks.
And so how are you going to haul the trash or not?
We budgeted, we budgeted within the article dollars to pay for the haul, a commercial hauling. Now, the thing is, that's just one of the, it addresses one of the articles. And I'm going to just quickly show the other article, other truck we have down there. So that's the cover assembly. And the next one is this one here. Looks great. Looks great. But how many miles on this one?
151,500 and something.
And who took the bite out of the chair, the seat?
Myes.
See this right here?
Your butt?
But bottom line, this truck needs to be replaced also. And that's also in a warrant article. So the thing is, why we're replacing the pickup truck maintenance is essentially too costly. Second thing is, we've been purchased under a state contract, significant savings. If you could see the state contract, you'd have a heart attack how much money you're saving.
That's what I'm wondering, like 27.9, it's a little outrageous.
It's outrageously good. And then there's no impact to tax rate because the dollars for this one is going to come from the capital reserve for the transfer station.
What are you buying? A wheel plate a truck? I mean, state contract, 27.9, you should be able to buy almost two trucks for that.
Nope. I got that numbers from the state. I actually calculated the state vendors off the state list.
Yep.
Yeah, for what?
A nice Chevrolet...
Three-quarter ton Chevy.
Vehicle.
Two-wheel, four-wheel?
Four-wheel.
Four-wheel.
Four-wheel, tell me any four-wheel for.
Eventually, we're going to have a plow on that truck.
You got one on the skid steer.
Skid steer's getting in age as well.
Yeah, but you're replacing $4,000 worth of tires a piece. I mean, whatever it's going to be. I mean, you've got to really start looking at your equipment acquisition here, because otherwise, I mean, this is just getting out of hand.
Well, we're replacing one truck with the same type of truck.
Yeah, but if you don't, if you don't have a plow on it, you only use two-wheel drive. If you already have a plow and skid steer, why would you buy a plow for a pickup truck? So you're going to have two plows?
No, but the thing is, the thing is, the transfer station is not allowed exclusively by the skid steer. Skid steer's small relatively to a plowing thing. And the thing is, Jeff augments the transfer station with his crew. He plows the transfer station. Am I correct? No, not at all. No. Okay.
Well, he, what Jeff does, he takes care of all our sand and salt that needs. He takes care of all that.
And if the banks get such that they need to be moved back, we have one or any competent contractors going to take the front end off. That's how we'll handle it.
All right.
Yep, that's what he does.
All right, let's get back to the warrants now. The warrant article, rather. Would it be in the one?
Random.
Yes.
Not used one, random.
Correct. The first warrant article nine. See if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of 27, 9, 8, 9, 83 for the purpose of buying a new pickup truck for the transportation to fund this appropriation by withdrawing 24K from the transfer station capital revenue fund with the remainder coming from the unassigned balance surplus with no money to be raised by taxation. And the note is, $3,400 and $3,425 of this money will come from the unassigned balance to be used for the purpose of, that was generated from the sale of the dumpsters. That's being transferred over to. So the impact is no, none to the initially, on this warrant, no tax implication because they're using a reserve revenue fund. And it's neat. Any other words, Woody, in this one?
What color again?
Actually, I was looking at green, but green is a special color. It's like six hundred dollars extra for green. Uh, and then they have so many trucks that have to be made and painted in green before they'll do your truck. So as I say, they have to have six trucks built, ordered for green. That's what they do before they paint you, at least that's what the dealer told me. And we're looking at bare bones, this isn't power doors, power windows, bare bones truck. Um, if it's approved, obviously, we're gonna go to the dealer, see if we can buy off the lot. Through the state contract, something will happen to be ordered, might be able to get a better deal on it. But it's not to exceed that, that's what we're looking at. And then, it's bare bones enough that, in my maintenance line, things that we would have repaired this pickup wood that we have. Um, we'll pay for line X, line X, the pickup bed. Um, I plan, we plan on, I plan on oil on the coke that truck, because I want it to last. Um, things like that that we aren't on that truck.
We looked at, um, the board, the selectmen looked at the, um, the, the maintenance records over the last several years. And the thing is, money pit comes to mind, it's just, we're sinking too much money into that to maintain that vehicle. So the thing is, it's time. What year is that vehicle again?
Two thousand.
Okay, it's time. Any, yes?
I would just like to add that I see the new, newly purchased vehicles, and I see what the NSRP is on them. And that's pretty darn good, the price that we're getting that for. It's rare for me to see a pickup truck for under thirty-three thousand dollars.
Well, and why is the double cab important? We were, we were talking about that, explain to the public where are we gonna double cab on that too?
The price difference be, at the Chevy dealership, when I talk to them, the price difference between a standard cab. And they call it a double cab, which is the extended cab version, is a, I think it was a hundred and fifty dollars on the bid price.
And what does that do for?
What that allows do, we put currently, we put products in the back of that, in the cab of that truck. Um, that have potential for blowing out bags of paper. Um, we get boxes that have loose paper in it, we can't leave in the back truck, we put it in the cab. That's.
Labor save.
We use it for.
Okay. Alright, any more questions on the pickup truck? Go ahead.
What are you gonna do with the old truck?
Uh, whatever money we can get from it, we're selling it.
Okay, so that was just show up as a revenue?
Yes.
It'll leave the...
The thing is, uh, the thing is, uh, we like to, uh, uh, there are things that he'd like to get with it, like the bed liner to keep it operational and oiling up it. The thing is, we'd like to plow the money back into it if we, if, if we get any, any good money for it. Thing is, uh, estimated amount of money already anywhere from a thousand to two thousand in that range. Consideratively, but the thing is, we'll try to get as much as we can. You wanna buy a pickup truck cheap?
Nope.
Only driving on Sundays.
Alright.
You also have the opportunity, Woody, of looking at leftovers.
These aren't quite.
Around March, because they kinda drop quite a bit. Same warranty, it doesn't make, doesn't make a difference if it's a year newer or a year older, but it's the same warranty, so.
Pretty hard to get saved right now.
Alright, continue on to, uh, Article ten. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for repairs to the transfer station Mack truck with a K. For rust mitigation and to replace the cable cover system. This sum is to be raised by taxes. This is where we're putting our money into an investment. Thing is, uh, we're preserving an investment we have, because this is over two hundred thousand dollars, which we had to replace it. And, uh, even if, even if we outsource hauling, long hauling of our trash, we would preserve the value, resale value of the truck for future.
Are you interested?
It's, uh, the truck has a two thousand and three, which we purchased a two thousand and two.
And the mileage on it?
Right now has ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty miles.
Which people say it can go for, how many more miles, would you say another a hundred thousand?
Four, five hundred thousand.
Yep.
The whole thing for me is, we did some research, I did some research on outsourcing some trucking. Some numbers that we're looking at right now. Sixty thousand dollars to forty-five to sixty thousand dollars was to have a private contractor come in and haul.
For how long?
A year. Uh, that's, that's one of the things.
That's some of the things that I alluded to earlier, that we'll be looking, uh, the selectmen and the, and the transportation manager will be working together to figure out, can we generate cost savings now? One of them is the outsourcing of the potential, uh, of trash. And the thing is, uh, we get some initial blushes of cost, but we're gonna look at that, and this year, as long as, we're gonna get pay schedules, we're gonna get a lot of stuff. But it, it's a service that's gotta continue, because, uh, to me, it's, uh, people say, well, we have fire and we have, uh, police, or we have schools. Well, we gotta give it a trash too, uh, it's a critical service in my mind.
And that, that figure is actually, there's three parts to that figure. One is to do the actual, uh, rust mitigation on the truck. Other than number is for the cover system. The third number is to have a company come in and haul while that truck is down. Uh, that number I budgeted for four weeks, because someone tells you it's three weeks, nothing ever happens in three weeks. In, or exactly when it needs to, things always happen, so to have us a little buffer of a week, uh, that's why it was figured at four weeks.
Right, I think that was your question earlier. What are we gonna do when it's down?
Right.
And, uh, we're, we're thinking that way now, we gotta have contingency plans. Okay, any other, go ahead.
I see, uh, you bring up a, kind of a sticky wicket here. Because that's the vote, uh, the vote to raise appropriate sum of twenty-nine, two fifty for repairs on the transportation Mack truck for rust mitigation and replace the cover cable system. Okay, okay, and says nothing about putting anything into, uh, any money aside for hauling. So, by the actual language of the warrant article here, you'd have to take and subtract that out of there, to find another way to put it in. Because that's not what it says here.
Yeah, we have two thousand dollars in there, hidden in that number.
Right, but that's, in order for us to do the rust mitigation, it's required, and then?
Rust mitigation is fixing the truck, yeah, it's nothing to do with hauling, that's another, it, I understand that they're related, because without the truck, you can't haul. But they're not one, they're not the, one of the same.
I'll, I'll, yeah, the attorney, because the attorney reviewed this, so.
Yeah, but do they know that that was included?
We'll verify. It's a good point, we'll bring it up, we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask the questions. Because the thing is, it, it's a, it's a, it's like, it's a cost, it's a cost that's incurred because of the repair.
Okay, so, just for the record, if the language, if the wording changes and the dollar value does not, this is still a valid public hearing and a valid warrant. And it may reflect a change in the wording, so I will get that clarified.
Okay.
Only if we change the numbers, then it doesn't matter, it's a little word.
Correct, yeah.
You gotta just...
We'll look into that.
Chew yourself a foot in the water.
Absolutely. Good, alright, any other questions on the Mack truck with the K? Great, here and none, we're gonna go into Article eleven. See if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of twenty-six hundred, thirty-three dollars, which represents a two percent raise in associated payroll taxes for paid elected positions. This sum is to be raised from taxes. The vote recommended by the board, section three to zero, this is all, uh, for visibility. Um, because it's, uh, the legislative body who should determine the pay raises for elected officials. Albeit a small amount, but the thing is, uh, we wanted to, the board's recommend, wanted the visibility of bringing it to the voters.
You wanna present the list to the app?
I can do it, in fact, I think it'll be in the, uh...
It's gonna be in the town report.
Town report. All the people it affects.
And actually, the average wage increase in the private sector in New Hampshire has been two and a half to three and a half percent. So we're still below, you know, what they're getting for raises out there. But it's, at least, uh, consumer price index is a little bit, uh, confusing with all of the things they've taken out. And of course, you go to get a consumer price, and they'll have northeast, they'll have the western part of the United States, they have the south. And it fluctuates everywhere according to what's in the mix for your consumer price index. So we looked at what the average wage increase would be, and kinda use that to dictate what direction we would go with.
Okay, alright, moving on to Article twelve. See if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six dollars for the milfoil control at Gorham Pond. Unauthorized segment except the grant from the state of New Hampshire, DES, amount of ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Known as the variable milfoil control grant. And four thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars to come from an unassigned balance surplus with the remaining nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars to come from taxes. Again, we've seen this type of, uh, uh, warrant before. We've had a good year with milfoil, and we may have another good year with milfoil, and so, but we don't know, it's not known. Uh, we're fortunate to have no other ponds in town infected with this invasive species at this point. I, this is something the board's recommend, and we continue to observe the beauty and the, uh, the viability of Gorham Pond. Sir, do you wanna speak to this?
Uh, actually, Lou DiBarrio would better speak to this, but I know, they did go with the, the higher price one, because that was a guarantee, right? With the new treatment?
Correct.
With Amy, yes.
Right.
I think that'd be a good thing to be brought up, the fact that the, the treatment that was chosen through the state is an experimental tr, uh, program. And if it doesn't work for some reason, they'll cover, that, they guarantee the treatment will work. So this, hopefully, this is a, a new chemical off the block, and we'll really do a number on it, and hopefully down the road, we'll be okay.
Is that why it's so expensive?
Uh, I think it's a few more than what the other, I forget what the difference was.
Yeah, they're only like a two, less than three thousand dollar difference, to a regular treatment.
Two or three thousand difference from what we normally would get versus this, and they guarantee this.
Milfoil's been going on forever and ever, and they said, okay, once we start hitting it, and it's gonna be less and less each year, to the point where it's just a maintenance thing. And we had the drought, and it sprung out, been with wild, and last year, we had a, a huge increase in the milfoil because of that drought situation. There was no drought last year, and also now that we're paying even more money than we were after, the year after the drought, how come?
We're actually, did not spend, executed as many dollars as we did last year, because milfoil was, had, was in the good fill last year. But there's, no one can predict which way it's gonna go out. If we shortchange, uh, we don't apply for the grant, and the thing is, we have a milfoil explosion, we're screwed.
Exactly, yeah.
And the thing is, if, the thing is, one of the things we're doing this year also, the thing is, we wanna make sure we get out, put in the door to get the grant from the state. If we don't apply for it, we lose out on, if we end up paying for it, we lose out on the grant potential. The second thing is, if we do have a great year with minimal milfoil, we wanna take those, if, going to Article thirteen, we wanna establish the, uh, capital reserve fund.
Trust fund, basically.
Yeah, so in other words, we don't have to raise that same amount of taxes in previous years. This year, they actually returned money to the general fund, which are asking to mitigate some of the taxes, but the thing is, uh, it'd be great next year if they could return more money back to taxpayers. To put into this capital reserve fund, so we don't have to keep going to the well, the taxpayers to keep dishing out.
And that forty-two seventy-six amount that's mitigating, part of that is from what the board of selectmen voted to, uh, put in, right, from the leftover funds. At three hundred and twenty-five dollars of that was for a neighborhood yard sale in the Gorham Pond, Karen Road, Stephanie Road area, that the residents donated to. They each had their own yard sale, where they contributed wherever they could, ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, to go towards the milfoil over and above what they normally do as a gesture of goodwill type of thing. So that was accepted as a donation, you know, towards that, so everybody's working, we have people volunteering down the ramp to monitor the boats. We have, you know, all sorts of weed watchers, stuff like that, checking the other ponds with kayaks, so it's a whole, whole operation. And, and, um, as, as Mike said, if we don't apply for, we're one of forty-three towns that gets grant money from the DES. If this doesn't pass, we lose the grant money, and then we have that uphill fight to get back and get on that list to get, there's other towns that can't get this grant money. We're in, on the ground floor with the grant money, and that's a, that's a huge help, that's, what is it, thirty percent?
Brian, you're, you, you bring up a quick point, are we ever gonna eradicate that? That's, that's a huge unknown.
No, not even gonna eradicate it, but the whole idea is, we were sold on, I guess, bill of goods or smoke block your butt, whatever you wanna call it, because... We were told it's gonna, here's the, the big dollar amounts, and every year it's gonna get less and less, and we're just gonna have a small maintenance, and also, this is starting to go up, 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 up.
And that, that drives me crazy.
You're not the only one.
I, I agree with you, and the thing is, it really drives me crazy, but the thing is, I'm to a point where I, I accept the reality of the situation, that's here to stay, it's not going away. And how do we, uh, mitigate?
Make a soccer field out of the pond, though.
Easier said than done, there's a lot of people enjoying, uh, Gorham Pond. Uh, but the thing is, uh, uh, I hear your frustration, I, I really do, but the thing is, it's not going away.
Bob, I, I don't know if you know the answer, this maybe Lou DiBarrio does. I thought that this experimental that we're using this time could last for a second or into a third year. I think it had longer lasting.
I believe so, I never heard the fi, I never got the final report from Amy, because, uh, Lou didn't keep me in the loop on that, I've been focusing on thirteen, but yeah, I believe there's something like that.
I mean, it doesn't control at all, but it's supposed to have a more detrimental effect on milfoil for a longer period of time.
But I'm hanging on to my wallet.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, especially if they say they're gonna do it for nothing, if it doesn't work, I mean, then you have to wonder.
Greg Leo, what do you have?
Uh, it could be worse off, we could have, uh, purgatory pond could be infected, infested, I mean, you know, so, I guess, when they started, we never knew what was gonna come like this, you know? But, here we are, and then, yeah, it'd like, be nice to keep it out of all the other ponds. But, what I wanna know is, they talked, you talk about the guarantee, what is the guarantee?
I think it's, okay, I don't have that right in front of me, in fact, uh...
Is there something you want me to put in the report, in the report?
Yes.
Might be good to, to do that.
I could add that.
It, it was something, it was something to the effect that they're trying this, it, it's like they've come out with a new treatment, which is a step up from what we've been getting. And if we go with this, which is another two or three thousand over what we would normally put in for, and this treatment does not work, they will continue to treat the pond to get it, so that it does work for this year. Now, whether or not, like you said, Bob, is that gonna last for three years, two years, three years, we don't know.
I, because I think there was some of the discussion we had, whether it was gonna last, it would last a multiple number of years, whether it was two, three years, I don't remember.
Initial, initial reports will have been good, but the thing is, again, I take everything here with a grain of salt.
Oh, yeah.
There's the one, there only one, there's only one firm thing, one truth here, it costs money here. That's, that is a firm truth here. The thing is, you can make the decision, either we do nothing, and then the rest of Dunbarton gets infected, or we do something right now. We're trying something new, the thing is, um, uh, it comes highly recommended by the state that we try, they wanna use Dunbarton because we've been a good player all these years, looking at this, uh, a good player payer, did I say?
Just one letter. Player payer.
Uh, but they're working with us, they wanna try this new chemical, and we, we asked before, I mean, they gave an NDS sheet to see how toxic it is, and the thing is, uh, it sounds great on paper, but the thing is, the truth will come, next year, when we're sitting down again, as we go, we've, we've been in the budget for next year, we'll talk about this again.
Why don't do it?
What are we gonna do with the six-legged frogs that wall from this chemical treatment?
Open up a French restaurant.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's warrant, uh, number twelve, and that thirteen kinda goes along with it. I alluded to this already, thirteen is where, uh, we wanna establish a capital reserve fund to be named invasive plant species capital reserve fund. Or there are other invasive species other than milfoil. Uh, for the maintenance control invasive species, uh, plant species, and to raise appropriate sum of one dollar we place in this fund with the amount, uh, to come from the unassigned fund balance surplus. And furthermore, to appoint the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This fund is to be the repository of the surpluses that are generated when we have a great year of no milfoil. Greg Leo.
So this fund would be for other bodies of water?
Correct, correct.
Or water? Simply for Gorham Pond.
Correct, and for potentially other invasive species.
Correct, exactly.
Correct, because there are other invasive species now that are coming, uh, in some of the other towns in the state.
Right.
Uh, the base, I, I don't think the clam has gotten it yet, but there was another one that's starting to show up.
Bamboo was one.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, so does that mean, uh, the, um, what the heck is it, the ash bor?
Is that what it's called, Japanese milly?
Possibly. I find that's an insect, uh, with this control of invasive plant species.
Yeah, exactly, so that could be the ash bor.
But no, the ash bor is an insect, not a, not a plant species.
Not a plant, so this is for plants.
Just a plant, so, hmm, okay.
Okay.
Oh, poison ivy.
I think it's native.
And, and, and the other thing, the other thing to point out that it, that included in the figure on twelve, I believe, I can say that it's, it's the treatment in some diving. That's, that's where we'd get some... That's, that's where we'd get some leftover money.
If we don't need to dive.
Which is what we have left over this year. They only had to do a handful of dives to actually extract the milfoil. That four thousand dollars and change or whatever it was, was left over from not having to dive. So that would be carried over till next year, so we're not having to ask for the same money over and over again.
You'd think somebody at the lake would dive anyways.
Huh?
You'd think you'd have people who live there that would like to dive.
You can't, it's, it's, uh, it has to be authorized by the state, you have to be certified in invasive plant species diving, you have to have.
Who would offer you at night?
Well, put it this way, if you go grab a milfoam and pull it out, it, you're actually spreading it, you're not helping it, it actually gets sucked up by a special bathroom, so.
Gentlemen, ladies, this concludes the warrant and the articles listed under the warrant for Dunbarton twenty eighteen. Now, the thing is, I'll just review the budgetary part now. As I said, if all the warrants are approved as listed, delineated in all the articles, it still represents a five cent decrease from last previous year.
Can I just speak on that?
Please.
Just to clarify it, um, if all these warrant articles pass, it's two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight seventy-five. And based on our current, uh, assessment, that would be a eighty-four cent increase on the warrants. Um, because the selectmen were proactive in the operating budget and keeping that flat. Um, we have an operating budget impact of three dollars and seventy-four cents for a total of four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Last year at tax rate setting, the municipal, um, tax rate was four dollars and sixty-three cents. So this proposal here is still five cents less than what we set our tax rate at. And this is based on two thousand and seventeen's assessment. We're anticipating at at least three hundred to five hundred thousand, uh, new property values. Uh, we hope to, you know, attain that kind of money. But again, uh, when I, uh, explained to the selectmen, we had the same situation last year, but we ended up, we recollected, uh. An additional four point four million dollars in new tax revenue. And we had to return three point, um, four, three point three million to the utility companies, so we reduced their property assessment. So it was only a net of one point four. So the money is potentially there, but we can't count on that until we're ready to set the tax rate. So based on what we have with the current assessment, we can potentially see a five cent decrease on just the municipal, uh, tax rate.
Speaking of utilities, aren't we, uh, still in legal battles with them?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, but there's some good news on the utility ballot, in a sense. We all know that Northern Pass got kicked, uh, to the curb, uh, for a short term, they're gonna appeal it. But it's resurrected the Grand State Power Link, and if you don't realize what Grand State Power Link, they were gonna use existing lines that that traverse through Dunbarton. They were gonna upgrade them, uh, maybe ten percent, five percent of the poles in Dunbarton. And that would definitely increase the tax, uh, revenue base. And they're gonna increase some of the capacity of the wires as a competitor to Northern Pass. They thought they were completely out of the running. As of this morning, in the interest union, they were quoted as saying they're gonna, they're gonna resubmit a proposal. And it's Grand State Power Link, part of National Grid, competitor to Northern, uh, to Northern Pass project. Bringing the same electricity down from Canada, different route, it would benefit Dunbarton. So, uh, as I say, Philman eleven, but, um, I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm trying to be optimistic here that we may benefit from, uh, this Northern Pass defeat. But have another alternative come through Dunbarton, use our existing right of ways. The Grand State Power Link, if you wanna look it up online.
What, what are the upgrades?
The upgrades, when they made these power lines about maybe in the thirties, uh, they over-engineered them. And some of the wiring just needs to be upgraded, the towers are high enough.
Okay.
Just the wires need to be upgraded. And some of, some of them are just a little, they've been too low, so they anticipated five percent of the the poles. I said, go for it ninety percent, and they didn't like that. I said, just to replace them all, re-establish a new tax base. But five percent, that represents true revenue to the, to the town of Dunbarton. So I'm often, I'm cautiously optimistic that this may come to fruition, um, but so.
Canadian line is battle, they have the higher towers, they have the DC line?
Yeah.
Yeah, they weren't that, not that.
Yeah, but they, a lot of stuff has been over-engineered, uh, and so they, they really don't have to do too many upgrades as far as, um, uh.
Yeah, you want, thanks, Bob.
So that's, I hope, I'm optimistic.
I think they're giving us a chart of the revenues that are gonna be generated.
Yeah, through this company, they were the best revenue.
Right, go ahead, Joe.
I think last year was quite a go-round. We're voting and town meeting dates for inclement weather, where did we ever stand with that if we were to have that again this year? I remember it was quite a.
Legally, the, uh, the town moderator can change the, uh, the town meeting time.
Okay. Um, because I remember it was quite a dastardly.
Yeah, the state kept in the middle of it, but the thing is, by the hour of the day, the, the town moderator had more power than a lot of people anticipated.
So that would, that would be the case again this year?
Yes.
If we were to have some sort of really inclement weather that would.
I'm not, let, let him speak to this too.
Sure. I figured she could.
The moderator has the power to change the date of the meeting, but not the election.
Ah, I knew there was, I couldn't remember exactly.
Yes, and then the thing is, all we did last year was again, change the town meeting.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, and he got all sorts of, uh, the, the state really got on our case, and they wanted us to re-gratify.
Well, that's, that's why, yeah, I couldn't remember how it all ended up.
And we went back, I, I, Brian was part of that, the thing is, we no, there was no gratification needed because, uh, the moderator was well within his, uh, his legal authority.
That's, that's all I remember, it was quite a deal.
Yeah, it was.
There was some legislation introduced in the House.
Yes.
Trying to address the election part of it, and it hasn't gone anywhere, so.
Yeah, I think it's still in committee.
Yes.
So the election date, don't anticipate it changing, not.
The town meeting.
To be, to be determined, it can be to change it.
All right, no, I.
Quick question, just curious. All right, any other questions on our warrant? Go ahead, Mrs.
Just one comment, um, on that Mac, I am applying for a grant to go towards the cost. Um, right now, they're saying they'll put the grant towards the cover, but I'm gonna try and get it to go for the whole package, the grant, but I'll tell you that I'm researching a grant.
I would please have that information available for the town meeting because the thing is, uh, the more information voters have.
I won't have a dollar figure because they won't vote on the grant until May, um, but I did check in.
But I think that information will be helpful towards passing the warrant, now, excuse me, the article of that warrant. Any other questions? Um, it's, I'm, this is a public comment, I'm open for public comments still on the warrant. All right, here and none, I'm gonna close this public hearing.
Bob. Second. I know you made a motion.
I made a motion. Thank you very much for, for the, and Brian, thank you for that, uh, we'll make, we'll make sure we have the wording part that we review that.
We, we're in the middle of things, we went through every source and, uh, we had all the work done in the house. So we have insulation, got the, uh, three and stuff, then they came back, they covered it, fire retardant. And then.
So we, we voted on stuff.
Our insulation. I know, in the living room, remember when those two doors were up top?
Yeah, like most of them might do this.
The guy called it, he was very nice, he had some two-by-threes and he said it wasn't part of the work order, but ended up cutting instead of two-by-threes to frame inside those doors. And then they cut that special insulation, I, I, Joyce knows the name, but I don't know what it was. They actually kind of fit in with the two-by-threes where they need those, but the whole thing blocked off. And in fact, uh, they are from Trump, that was, uh, uh, terrible, it was my brother's, my brother's. Now, part of it was the fact that that temperature override.
Yeah, they, I think it's, they're gonna. Can't keep the wrong, the council, I mean, that direction.
Not with the, uh, the, the.
What the solution is. People choose, I think people should make great what you do first.
I never showed them, I'd been up with the water, the. And I've been, I've been wanting to try one, waited five weeks for it, it actually fired and stuff, yeah. But he said, it's gonna be great, but the thing that also, you just, you just get so much more, so much more closed in now that they get bigger, they're finding it. Also, they, they get rid of the. It's bothering that they, they're like crazy. And then they also decided, where we have this one potentially, so. Put all the, all the funnels in, I don't know what they call those, those funnels. All those, they did a great job considering they were working at a storm, a lot of the day, even if you're building the house off. I had to wear a mask off, you know, and we had to get out of the house and they did the whole, but that was okay, we were great from the beginning.
Go ahead, go catch her, all right, I'll see you.
Something's, something's moving in the right direction.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to leave you.
I'd like to see it.
That's your thing, okay. Well, that's what I need, this is.
They did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, we don't have any.
Now, we're just.
I made a motion that it enjoyed.
I mean, no other public comments?
I already went to comments, no more.
Okay, no more. All right, God, we're telling the motions.
I second Conkers backing out, discussion?
Sometimes I panel.
Here and none.
It's non-derivable, so.
Nine or eight, yeah.